For all the many blessings you've given us, we gather to make decisions for our community. May we only use our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter of this place before us, and always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fourth item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Rainey, seconded by Commissioner Burks. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Ms. Johnson?
Vice Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Commissioner Burks.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Mayor Blade.
Aye. Motion passes. Item five, public hearings, we have none this evening. Item six, citizens' comments.
Your items made.
Thank you ma'am. Item seven, public announcements, awards and recognitions, we have none. Item eight, staff comments and monthly reports, city manager report, Mr. Collins.
Yes ma'am, nothing for you tonight, other than what we discussed in the work session. We'll get some of that information back out to you formally, and we'll follow up with the date that the website will become live, and that information will be posted.
Thank you sir.
Yes sir.
Item nine, consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Rainey, seconded by Commissioner Lucas. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Ms. Johnson?
Vice Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Burks.
Aye.
Mayor Blade.
Aye. Motion passes. Item ten, old business, we have none. Item eleven, new business. A, ordinance 2020-17, an ordinance to amend the City of Fairview Noah's ordinance.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Vice Mayor Rainey, seconded by Commissioner Dawson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Ms. Johnson?
Vice Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Burks.
Aye.
Mayor Blade.
Aye. Motion passes. Item B, playground presentation by Parks and Landscape Board. Mr. McCoy.
May I say something, Mayor, before he starts?
You may.
Um, as most of you know, I'm the commissioner that sits on this, on the Parks and Landscaping Board. So they made a presentation last night to the board, and I have to say that I am very impressed with what they've done, and the precision, and all the details worked out, so I hope it's a good presentation tonight.
Thank you ma'am. I'm sure it will be.
No pressure, Mr. McCoy.
Will there be drawings that you're gonna draw yourself, or is it just gonna be pictures?
So, uh, we've got a slides that we're gonna put on there. So this is, um, kind of a report on what we've researched and found, and worked with a variety of different vendors and proposals in the playground group to, um, put together a design and a cost package and a maintenance package, and a recommendation that went before the Parks and Landscape Board. This is the playground group, went to the Parks and Landscape, and it was approved to bring here and present. Next page. Uh, there's a set of, uh, kind of the contents to let you know what's coming up in this presentation. There's gonna be three, four sections of the presentation that'll actually be presented by the vendor with Great Southern Rec. It's gonna be about the detail on the hardware and the design specifics. Then I'll step back in after that and come and talk about the budgeting and some other components in that bid. Next page. Uh, executive summary, it's just, uh, kind of a repeat of what I said. The Parks and Landscaping Board have worked with the Playground Rebuild Group, which is a citizens' group, to explore and develop this proposal for the replacement playground at the City of Fairview's Bowie Park. Uh, we present the proposal to the BOC for their review, consideration, and feedback. If the city were to choose to pursue this path, the rebuild group would shift their focus from the design phase to fundraising, and we'd have a, kind of a, design model to push forward. Next slide. Oh, there it is, I'm sorry. Uh, to be, to see, kinda, give you an idea of what we've, um, kind of run through to get to where we are today. Just kind of a history of when things started, and the variety of the different types of meetings we've had, the RFP process, playground tours, vendor presentations, uh, design meetings. Next slide. Carrying us down through COVID, which delayed things, and threw a wrench for a couple of months, then you'll see we switched to Zoom meetings to keep marching forward, culminating to the presentation tonight. Next slide. You may recall, um, back when we started the project, there were a couple of surveys that went out. Uh, one to a, uh, an adult audience, Citizens of Fairview, and one to the Children of Fairview, asking them what they really wanted in a playground. And you can see that the top, uh, three there are swings of all types, slides of all types, climbing structures. Uh, fourth is a treehouse clubhouse fort. This is from the adult. Uh, at the top, you'll see like 495, 362, 282, those are the individual respondents in that, those top four categories. Next slide. Child survey results, um, again, number one, swings of all types, slides of all types, uh, monkey bars for third, a zipline, climbing structures, climbing wall, free swings, and a treehouse is about number nine there. Again, you can see the respondent counts at the top to give you an idea of how many people responded, and pretty clearly what that top chunk is interested in in a playground. And with that, I'm gonna switch over to Nathan Chance, he's with Great Southern Rec. He's gonna go into the next few sections on this presentation, um, the equipment, design features, the maintenance plan, and costs, and the warranty information.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Welcome, sir.
Um, so my name's Nathan. I have been on most of those Zoom calls, um, and I can tell you that, um, first and foremost, I have seen very few citizens committees put the kind of time and effort that Scott and his group have done into what they're presenting tonight. You guys should really be proud, um, of what they've, of what they've done and accomplished. So, um, so, uh, with that, you can roll the next slide. So, just a quick blip about Great Southern. Um, we're headquartered in Murfreesboro. Um, we're a design-build, uh, commercial playground, um, company, and we operate in several states, but we are headquartered here in Middle Tennessee. Um, self-performed work, fully bonded, licensed, insured. Um, so, a big, um, hunk of the time that your committees, committee spent in, uh, putting together this final design was, um, working through a succinct design theory of what we want, um, this park to, uh, turn, you know, how, how we want it to turn out, what we want it to look like in the end. And, um, I think we've all known from the beginning that, uh, Bowie Park, and especially the playground, is a very prized, um, possession of, of the city and community. There's lots of memories that have been made there. Um, most of you probably have played there, or taken your children or grandchildren to play there, and remember doing so. And so, um, that, none of that's taken lightly, and we're honored to be a part of, you know, of this design. So, um, I'll read a couple of these. Um, so, play is not taught, it is discovered through experience. Children need an unprescribed play space to explore, invent, and create. Um, if you have kids, or have ever raised them, I'm, I'm in the process of raising three, with the fourth one on the way, the first three are boys, so we know what the fourth one's gonna be, be a boy. But, um, one thing we all know as parents, that children do not wanna be told what to do, right? They don't wanna be told how to use something, they don't wanna be told, um, how to, they don't want dad to show them how to do something. Um, another thing we know as parents is, uh, children were created, um, by their very nature. They explore, they learn by exploring, um, they, they learn by creating. Uh, this is why you go spend a hundred dollars, um, at Christmas for the Hot Wheels Ultimate Car Garage, and they just play with the box, you know, for a, for a week. So, um, the third one, uh, is, you can never have a car big enough to take all your kids to Florida, once you have kids, and all the stuff has gotta go, right? So, um, the next plum line we, we designed through was, a truly community, a truly inclusive community spa, space will address the needs of the entire community. I mean, we'll, we'll dive into that a little bit deeper here in a minute, but, um, we, we wanted to be cognizant, um, and compliant to, you know, ADA, but at the same time, we really wanted to go above and beyond, and really, really create a, a place that brings the entire community together. Um, and the last one is, a dreamy play space should not be a maintenance nightmare. That's cheesy, and I'm a dad, so it comes with the territory, but we'll dive into that, too. Um, so here is your final design, um, and what we, um, through several different revisions and design options, we kinda narrowed it down to. Um, you'll, you'll see one of the, the big bright features is a multi-level, uh, treehouse-themed playground that provides three different levels of play opportunities that you can a, access through the tower itself. Um, you can go up some different bridges to, to gain those accesses. There's lots and lots of slides, so we kind of took that design theory, and then also, um, all of the info that Scott and his group came up with through community outreach, of knowing that, hey, one of the top two things everybody asks for is a bunch of slides. So, um, we, we have slides of different kinds of heights on there. Um, zip, there's a zipline on the, um, on the, the final design, um, an area that's designed for, you know, for, for younger children. Um, we didn't necessarily wanna create a space that we said, hey, if you're three, you have to go here and play, um, because that kinda goes against the idea of, hey, children learn and grow at their own, um, at their own pace. I've got one that, when he was three, you couldn't keep him off the top of that tower, and then I have another one that, you know, by the time he's 10, he still may not go up there. So, um, with, you know, that kind of design, uh, was put, was put through that process, and we've got some other renders we'll kinda go through. Um, here's an aerial. Um, so one of the things, uh, and to help you orient, in the bottom left-hand portion of that photo would be where your parking lot is. Um, kinda going back behind the zipline would be the, um, the outdoor nature center over there. Um, the, uh, you can kinda see the walking track there, and the footprint that we used is pretty much the same footprint you had originally with the addition of the zipline area, um, on the opposite side of the walking trail. So, the majority of the place surfacing that you see out there, um, is a wood fiber mulch, and you, you guys had that already on the playground. Um, the darker area is a rubber pathway, so as part of that, you know, inclusive and inviting experience, we wanted to make sure that we had an easy way for, um, children or adults that might have mobility impairments to navigate the playground, um, access, you know, the different access points on the, on the equipment, um, on the swings, and be able to kinda, you know, navigate their way through that. Um, here's another angle here, uh, where you can see the, the play structures, um, there. And we also tried to make sure that, um, you know, you've got a lot of shade and trees around, so the design we've got, uh, would keep all those, we wouldn't be taking down any trees. Have you saw that one already? That one. So here's your net climber. Um, one of the, one of the challenges in creating a community space is, mom or dad might bring a two-year-old, a six-year-old, and a fifteen-year-old, you know, to a playground. And so we often get asked, hey, how do we engage, um, an older audience, or even children that maybe wanna be challenged more? And one of the really unique things that, uh, we ended up bringing to the table was, uh, this net climber. So, it, it maxes out at eighteen and a half feet tall, um, that, you can kinda see up there where the top of the slide is. There's a, um, a cargo net area that kids can climb up to and access. It's about thirteen feet off the ground, where they can enter that slide and come down. Um, but we really wanted to provide, um, something that was really different and unique, and really made a statement. Um, and then also, it being towards the back of the playground, we didn't wanna impair, um, vision to the, uh, to the zipline area, so you can kinda see through the ropes. Um, so here's some of, a couple of the inclusive pieces we, we, um, have on the designs. But one is a ground-level merry-go-round. Um, if there's anything that, uh, one event that all children love to do, it is spin, um, in circles until you, as a parent, wanna throw up just watching them. Um, and so, uh, a, a year ago, our manufacturer came out with this, uh, merry-go-round that is completely ground-level, so a wheelchair or walker can come from the sidewalk to a rubber pathway directly on, um, to the merry-go-round piece, and it allows, um, easy access, but also an opportunity for children with, of all different abilities to be on the same place, um, piece of equipment, enjoying the same experience. Um, your zipline has a standard seat that you see in the wood mulch area. Um, the top part of the photo, there's an inclusive full-body harness that, um, you can kinda sit then, sit down in and be strapped into, um, that's on there. So, there's a couple of, um, pieces that we added to this specifically to, you know, to increase inclusivity and access on the, on the playground. Um, here's another, uh, rendering of your, of your biggest structure there. Um, and you'll notice that there are, um, transfer stations, which are the, what look like step decks, um, in the bottom of the photo, and kinda on the right side there for, uh, ADA, um, compliance. But we also wanted to provide a way for wheelchairs to elevate and, and gain access to the structure itself, so the structure has a ramp. Um, so, you know, and again, there's a, there's probably a dozen different climbers on this structure, so there's many places to access it. I mean, that kinda went with our design theory of, children don't wanna be told how to get on and off of a structure, so we wanted to create a, you know, the ability for them to, um, to create their own pathway through the, through the playground. So, the tallest deck on the triple tower, um, that slide is on a thirteen-foot tall deck. So, and it's, it's as high as a, as a deck can be in the, in the playground industry, and it's fully enclosed in the top. The only way is through a, a ladder internal to come back down, or down the slide, so, you know, it's safe that a child wouldn't fall out. But, um, it really creates a neat, I mean, it's a neat experience when you're up in the top of that, and you can really see out a long way. Um, so it's a, it's an impressive structure. And here's a, a back view rendering of it. So, there's three different towers in there, one's three-leveled, one's two-leveled, um, and then there's a single level, but it's all, all of different heights. Um, a two-to-five-year structure that matches it, so, you know, one of the things that we wanted to kinda keep going throughout the design was, um, a natural look to the playground because of the look of Bowie Park and the nature center. Um, and so, uh, this is designed to be, you know, kind of a, an, an outlook tower, um, an outpost that kids can go in and, and kinda create their own modes of play. And, and you'll notice everything on the structure is much lower to the ground, so for kids that maybe don't wanna have the challenge yet of going thirteen feet on the ground, this would be the spot for them. In a back view of the structure there. I mean, here are some of the freestanding pieces. So, uh, swings, you know, is another one of the top, um, survey results. Um, those are on, on here. We have a tire swing, um, with, uh, two more bays of your standard belt seats there. Um, another element that we wanted to add in for a different texture and different style of play, um, is a, are some GFRC components. So those are made from, uh, they're glass fiber reinforced concrete, so it's just basically, um, a custom concrete piece. Um, and it really gives unique and, um, real texture to, um, the pieces. So there's a, there's a balance log on there, um, and a little bear cub that's on the design. And then we have, um, another swing set, uh, in the, kinda two-to-twelve younger kid, um, area that has, uh, two full harness seats that are inclusive ADA style. Um, one toddler bucket for the, the little, little guys, and then there's an adult child swing, um, also. So, you know, mama or daddy can get on, I mean, swing with their, you know, with their son or daughter there on the same, on the same piece. A little themed, themed play truck, and, yep, and then, um, one of the last components for the, um, kinda multi-use area is, uh, we, we've got about a five-hundred square foot slab of concrete with some different, uh, pieces of music equipment on it. I mean, it was just, it's another way to kinda create an inviting space that different ages and abilities can, can come together, and, um, you know, in this case, make, make music. So, um, and then this is, uh, I think the last layout slide. It's a top view, it kinda, it, it kinda shows the outer perimeter. But, um, one thing that we have included in, in the designs, and we've been working around, is, um, a fencing that would be similar to the style fencing that was on the original playground. Um, that'd be the, the hard dark lines going around, um, the, the entire outer perimeter. Um, and then we, we looked at a couple of different options, but kinda landed on, um, in an effort to help mom or dad manage a two-year-old and an eight-year-old on the same playground, providing some seating space, um, that kinda separates the younger child area from the older child area, where you can sit, see both ways. It's sort of central to the playground. Um, kind of creates a barrier in between the two, but it's not necessarily, you know, maybe as institutional as putting a fence directly through the middle of the playground. Okay, so I, I touched on this. Um, this is a, uh, so to meet ADA requirements, ADA is concerned with, um, the types and styles of play components that you would have on a playground. So they look at, um, elevated components, they look at elevated components that are on a, on an accessible pathway, and then they look at ground-level components. And they've got a big chart, and it basically says, the more elevated components you have, um, the more ground-level components you need. And an elevated component would be just what it sounds like, a slide, or, you know, that's up off the, off the ground, or a climber that elevates off the ground. Um, so, the num, on the, on the bottom half, the numbers in parentheses are, per the design that you have, um, those numbers are what the ADA would require you to minimally have to meet compliance. So for your five-to-twelve-year structure, for the amount of, um, of elevated components we have, ADA requires a minimal fifteen to be on an accessible pathway. You've got twenty-seven. Um, they would require eight to be ramp accessible, you've got nine. Um, and so in pretty much every category, uh, we would be, um, well, well over, um, what the, what the minimum requirement does. And, and that was done with intention, you know, we, we didn't wanna meet just minimal requirements. It's part of creating a, um, a truly inclusive play space. Um, you can roll from there. Um, okay, so the, one of the last things that I touched on was, maintenance and warranties. So, uh, you know, maintenance is a big part of a playground, especially a large playground, um, and we also realize that most communities don't have endless resources to spend lots of money every year maintaining, um, playground equipment. So one of the things that, um, our company put together and packaged for, um, your community in our proposal was, um, what we call, it's, it's with our, uh, Playforce system, but it's a, it's pretty much a five-year worry-free, um, maintenance plan. So, um, any playground equipment that, um, a, a community purchases would come with a manufacturer's warranty. So an example would be, um, a slide is produced, and it has a fifteen-year warranty on it. So, if the slide breaks in year three, manufacturer covers it, they'll send you a new slide, but you gotta figure out how to, you know, take the slide off, put the new one on, make sure it's compliant, all that. Um, anything that we install, for the lifetime of that manufacturer warranty, we'll provide the labor for. So you could call us year twelve, hey Nathan, slide's broke, here's a picture, we'll get the new one, and our crew will come back out and, um, put it on for you. And that, that covers the lifetime of your manufacturer's warranties. So then in additional to that, the first five years, um, once a year, one of our team members will come by and do, uh, a, a maintenance check, so we'll look over every piece of, of the playground and make sure that no bolts have come loose, or come out, that there isn't any hardware that may be missing, may need to be replaced. Um, and then we'll document all of that. If we find it, uh, we'll cover the, getting the additional hardware for you, putting it in, um, cover the labor for that. And we'll also replace, there, there's not much on a playground that, uh, in its design would fail in the first five years. Um, moving parts are really the biggest ones, and the only, um, real moving parts you have would be on your swing, so we'll replace those, um, within your first five-year period. And then we're also including maintaining your mulch, uh, every eighteen months for that first five years. So, so really, in the first five years, the only thing, the, the intent was, the only thing for the city to be responsible would be, you know, vandalism, or like an act of God. But other than that, anything that's maintenance-wise, our company would cover that. Um, after the five-year period, your, uh, labor warranty would still carry out through the rest of your manufacturer warranty. I think we have one more. So, we were also kinda asked, you know, hey, we get all that, sounds great, but is there really anything else that we might need to do, that our staff might need to be aware of? Um, and one of the things that we did come up with is, because you do have a lot of playground mulch, I mean, you think of a kid running through, dragging their feet, you know, they'll get out there and dig in it. Um, it, and ideally, somebody could spend, um, you know, thirty minutes to an hour a month, just raking back any, any of the spots where kids have kicked it out. Um, but other than that, that's, you know, that's really, uh, the most maintenance that we'd expect for you all to do in that, in that first five years. And then there's some more details there about the warranties that I just talked about, and then, um, adding the mulch every, every year and a half. Um, this is what we, this is literally what I just said, so I won't read it again. Um, that's a copy of our, um, certified installation, so it just, that's, that's in writing saying, our labor backs up your product warranties. Um, these are our manufacturer's warranties. You, do you guys want me to go through those in depth? I'm happy to. Okay, yeah.
If we could just read this page. I'm kidding.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, yeah, in, in its entirety, yeah. It's translated from German, so we'll, I'm sure it'll, it'll work out well. Uh, and that's your music equipment warranty. And then, I think, that's all from me, right? Okay, all right.
I have a question.
Yes.
The, the mulch, it, what is the mulch? What is it?
So it's an, it's, it, the engine, the, uh, industry term is engineered wood fiber, but it is, um, wood mulch. So it's, uh, it's debarked and cleaned, uh, tree mulch.
And accessibility with that, and if you're in a chair, what is?
So it's still ADA compliant. Um, wood mulch, rubber mulch, poured rubber are all compliant to the ADA standard. Um, just like a transfer station makes a play structure ADA compliant, but, um, the difference in something being truly inclusive and compliant can be two different things sometimes with ADA. So, um, it does meet ADA requirements, however, it's also, I mean, you know, in reality, it can be difficult to push a wheelchair through, um, wood mulch, which is why we added that poured rubber pathway, you know, through the middle of the playground for really, um, more realistic, better access.
And I'm assuming the design, I, besides, so if, if it's a, like the, the merry, the spinning doy.
I'm sorry?
The, the merry-go-round.
Uh huh.
I'm assuming that the rubber path goes all the way to that, so if you're-
And surrounds it, that's right.
Okay.
That's exactly right. So, the, um, all of the, the inclusive swing seats, the rubber goes directly under them, so you could take your, you know, wheelchair straight to them. Um, the, the ground-level merry-go-round is surrounded by the, by the, um, bonded rubber that pathway. Uh, the music equipment is actually on a, on a concrete, you know, flat area, which you would access by the rubber pathway. And then your zipline seat that's inclusive, both of those platforms to access that, the rubber mulch, or the, the bonded rubber would be there as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions while I'm still up here?
I've got one. Is there a reason we went with the wood mulch instead of the rubberized mulch?
It, it, there is, and it's a, it's the difference in cost. So you have, um, I think it's around fourteen thousand total square feet of surfacing on these designs, and not have been fifteen thousand. It's, it's a bunch of, of, uh, of surface area. Um, wood mulch we can install for like a dollar fifty, dollar sixty a square foot. Um, any, any unitary surface, which would be your rubber pathway, um, increases to about fourteen dollars a square foot, because we have to account for a substrate for it, and then the, the rubber itself. So, I don't know the math off the top of my head, but I mean, that could, that could add another a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the design.
That's for the rubberized mulch, or the fourteen dollars a square foot is actually for the, the, the surface?
For the, for that rubber pathway surface.
Okay.
So you, you could do that throughout the entire playground.
Right.
But then you'd be doing fifteen thousand square feet at fourteen, yeah, yeah.
Sure. But the rubberized mulch versus the, the wood mulch, is it just a cost issue again?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And, and just to, uh, clarify, there's no, uh, loose rubber mulch. Um, the only loose is the wood mulch, and then the rubber that's on there is a bonded rubber, so it's a, it's a solid rubber pathway. But the ru, that solid rubber pathway is nine to ten times more expensive than the wood mulch.
Sure. Thank you.
Did you hear the cost on the, the wood mulch, the difference? Did you hear what we said there, just to make sure?
Yeah, versus the, so I, I think, did they make a, a rubberized mulch? I've seen it sold.
Yep.
Just thinking, you know, the difference between a, a rubberized mulch and a wood mulch.
Correct.
Uh, is there a pretty significant difference in cost?
There still would be. Um, they, a loose-fill rubber mulch, right, so like shredded tires.
Right.
Uh, and you'd, you'd wanna colored rubber mulch. The black, the standard black really rubs off on kids' backs. So, it's prob, it's four sixty-five a square foot.
Okay.
So you'd add another three dollars a square foot about on top of the, um, you know, the twelve thousand odd square feet of wood mulch that you have now. Would still be just as ADA compliant. Um, an advantage to it would be, you wouldn't really have to add mulch every, you know, every year, every eighteen months. Wood, wood mulch turns back to dirt, loses depth, which is why you replace it.
Right.
Um, rubber mulch, you would have to add some occasionally, but it's really just what kids take home and kick out of the playground.
Right.
Um, so you, you don't have the added every other year cost there.
Got you. Thank you.
I'll be here if you have more questions.
So as we look at, uh, the design, and you'll see, we'll go through the phases here, um, the, the phases are kinda what we developed, um, with the idea of looking at building a large playground. There's a, a, a cost with that, and obtaining those funds, um, on a timeline. And so the goal was, what could we do to kinda break this into phases? The advantage being that we could launch, uh, kinda the substantial components of the playground sooner rather than later to get something in place. So that's the purpose for seeing this phase breakdown. As you look at the different, you know, the exhibits you have kinda talk about each of these pieces of equipment that are identified. So this is what we projected based on cost, and we'll go look at those costs in a minute. But I would also s, say that as you're looking at this, if there's something in there that you, you wonder, why would it be in phase one or two, or I'd rather see something moved in, it's flexible to do that, with your discretion, and, and you know, there's, the impact is cost, of course, but we, you'll be able to see that as well in your review. Um, so phase one, it's the, uh, large treehouse structure, the, the big giant one. It's the smaller treehouse structure for the two-to-five-year-olds. It's the two different sets of swings, so those were kinda captured in, which include the slides. So they kinda captured that substance of the, um, reviews from the community of the things they wanted most. It includes three of the six park benches, uh, for perimeter seating, the mulch surface, the, uh, bonded rubber pathways, and the borders that would go around that area. Uh, phase two brings in the rope climber, which is that spider web climber with a slide, the remaining three of six benches for seating, uh, additional wood mulch and the rubber surfaces to connect that, that piece of equipment and the borders there. Phase three brings in the spring rider, which is the fire truck, the musical instrument area, the in-ground merry-go-round that we saw, and, uh, the GFR- area, the in-ground merry-go-round that we saw, and, uh, the GFRC, um, play components, the climbing components. Uh, phase four brings in the last piece, which is that double zip line, and as you saw in the map, that double zip line extends out past the current perimeter playground. So there may be some additional things that we need to do with getting permission from the easement, or the, um, you know, the conservatory agreement that we've got now to extend past that. So at that point, we'd have to do it before we put that in, or confirm that we don't. Um, wood mulch, bonded rubber, and borders for there. Next slide. Looking at timelines, if we were to, if we had, um, a check today, and we could write a check today, that, for everything that we've talked about, it's about 12 to 14 weeks from time of order. Uh, most of that time is lead time related to the equipment. The, the longest lead time out of that equipment is the net climber. Um, installation time, uh, once you've got the equipment is actually about four weeks with decent weather, could extend a couple if there's a lot of rain. Uh, the play equipment layout and installation, two to four weeks of that. Uh, the border and perimeter construction, surfacing about a week, and the rubber surfacing and one, a wood mulch installation about a week. So those are the components that make up that whole timeline. Next slide. If you were to break that against the phases now, say, "Oh, we don't have enough to do everything," what, how much is each of these phases, uh, timelines? Ten to twelve weeks for phase one, it's down a little bit, basically because the web climber's been shifted. Uh, fa, phase two has got that web climber, it's a little longer because of that. Phase three and phase four, fairly similar with a little bit less time for phase four. Pricing quotes, this, these are priced on turnkey when, I think we had discussion in the past, there was some, I guess, debate or discussion on how much could we save? Would it be wise to do a community build to try to save a lot of money? What are the risks involved? Well, these quotes that we're looking at up here are turnkey, um, because that sounded like that was the desired approach, but you'll see in a minute, I've included some other prices, just so you can know what that difference was. We, we found in our group, it wasn't a significant difference compared to the risk and other elements that are required with equipment, but I wanted to give you those numbers anyhow just so you had them. Um, so these are turnkey installations. Full, full build turnkey, 640K. Uh, the partial community build, 625, so you can see that saves a little. Uh, a full community build, this is where you've got heavy equipment and a lot of other things coming in, and a crew of people that have shown up, you can get it down to 520. The phase, if you were to break that, that full turnkey build amount, that's 640, um, and come down into the phase one, that's a 400K phase, phase two, the 106K phase, phase three, an 87K phase, and phase four, a 51K. Note, at the bottom, fencing, the wood fence is estimate, estimated at 39K, but we're still re, researching some non-wood options. And I would say also on the fence, that's the one area that I think we, everyone agreed that that might be perfect for the community build efforts, to put the fence in, and possibly try to get donates or discounts on the equipment, the, uh, materials that go into that. So the fencing is not included in any of these numbers. We pulled that out. A, we're still looking at numbers, and B, we think that would be a, a target opportunity for community involvement. Next slide. So this is the quote for the full turnkey, just so you can see the details, parts, numbers, and everything that made up that 640. I won't go through all of it, but you've got it there as you're comparing to the other drawings you've got. Next slide. This is the partial community build. So you'll see some things have come off of that list for the partial, as far as the labor component that got us down to the 625, so that gives you the detail. Next slide. This is the full community build. Um, and we'll look at a slide after this that explains a little more what's behind that, but that takes it down to 520. So that's the biggest savings, but it's also the biggest requirements for equipment and other things to make that happen. And risk if people don't show up, or risk if somebody gets hurt, or those types of things. Next slide. Uh, community build info, um, I won't go through all of that, but there's, uh, the partial community build, there's a definition there of, of what goes into that with a three-day volunteer weekend. And then the full community build, which includes more labor and equipment, and we'll look at some of that equipment requirement. I don't know if it's on there, might be on the next slide. Um, next slide. Yeah, so, uh, the community build, you've got concrete requirements that come in as part of that, so that gives you an idea of those bags of concrete. Uh, again, I won't go through all those details, but you have it to reference. Next slide. Equipment requirements, scaffolding, uh, deck crane, um, two skid steers, those are the kinda things you need to bring to the table or rent, or get somebody to provide those and, and have them show up on site. So I guess it illustrates some of the complexity if you try to stretch it on the community build involvement there, but I wanted you to see the numbers. Next slide. Equipment requirement, again, more detail, we're looking at kinda tools here, utility knives, all the things you need to bring to the table as well, if you're gonna, uh, have volunteers come forward and participate in that. Next slide. Funding. Um, so, um, we just saw kinda the, the commu, the full build out and then the phase build out and those numbers. Where we've been at in our fundraising, our current balance since we started, and I think the first funds came in back when there was the barbecue event, before maybe even this, the, the playground group had started. I think that, that had started. And so with that, um, some other donations, some other events that have come in, there's a current balance of 21,000 in that, uh, account. It's not a lot when compared to the 640, but I would also say that, uh, up till now, or up till this, if this gets approved, we haven't really had a drawing to go talk about and pursue. We haven't had a say, we haven't had a way to say, "You can get sponsorships of different, uh, pieces of equipment, sponsor some of fence, bricks, you can see the design you're building." So we're gonna have a lot of ways to kinda hit the market to try to start to raise funds with something of substance now versus just a vision of, "We do want a playground." So I think that will increase, and the question is, "Well, how much?" It's very difficult to say. You know, you know, we've got the, the COVID restrictions going on now, so that inhibits some events. The barbecue, I think, was affected this year for that. So we're targeting it for next year, maybe next spring, but we don't know whether that will happen. Car washes, some of the other things that could happen as far as, uh, car shows, kind of off the limits right now. So you'll see this schedule, I've gone through the last quarter of this year and take it through every quarter next year, and then I'm, I'm truly kinda guessing what I think we could do. Um, some people felt that we can do better than that, this, but I'm trying to balance that optimism, uh, in risk to, uh, not overpromise. Um, so with a current balance of 21, we think we could get another 5,000, and this kinda depends when we say the playground is approved, and this is what we're designing. Between the, the rest of this year, um, 5,000 on just individual contributions. However, if we were to get, uh, if we could get a design approved and start, basically we've had our design team that's been working through that task list. All of that effort shifts once we've got an approved design, and everybody's shifting our focus onto the fundraising efforts. So if we had an approved design early in the, uh, last quarter of this year, that immediately starts letting us market things like bricks and placards and other pieces, and start dividing things up and start to raise money. So I think we can exceed that if that design were to be approved. The 5,000 is just kinda saying, "Hey, here's the kind of a pro forma design, we're getting closer for individual donations," and not groups, not, not events, not anything like that. Uh, quarter one, individual contributions again, and now some individual sponsorships. So I've got that coming in later, because it depends on when we get the design approved, where we can start actually sponsoring components of the playground. Uh, Q2, individual contributions, I've got those mapped coming down a little bit, just because I think maybe we've hit the well a couple times, and so we're getting a smaller donation factor there. Individual sponsorships, I have the same amount. Uh, now we might be able to start getting in with corporate sponsorships. I know budget time is coming up, but I know companies are facing the same kinda COVID budgetary challenges. You know, there's extra costs and, and, uh, that they're absorbing right now and lower revenue. Um, but if we could get in to that budget cycle, the idea is that maybe we can find 15,000 in corporate sponsorships by that time of quarter two next year. Uh, and then events, assuming that we can do events, barbecue, car show, car wash, we're projecting 15. I think the barbecue, do you remember, Derek, was it?
He said 12,000.
12,000, and that was a last minute, last second, we didn't have a design, we didn't have a placard, so we may really be able to do much, much better than that, especially if everybody is really anxious to get out once the virus lets us. Um, so that number may be very much underestimated, events. And then, um, quarter three, contributions again, sponsorships continuing, still kinda beating the streets for the corporate sponsorships, some more events. And then quarter four, kinda the same schedule. And you can kinda see that cumulative balance that projects at the end of quarter four, 152,000 dollars available. I think we can do better than that, I just didn't wanna overpromise. But what, the reason I wanted to paint this, because it kinda gives you an idea of the timeline involved, and what we're trying to raise towards. And, uh, depending, we will get a better feel for this probably after a couple of quarters next year, and then we'll have a lot closer number, are we way ahead, are we way behind? So right now, that's just a projection. But the challenge it brings forward is how to, when we divide this up, well, you know, if, if that were to be the, the exact picture, we could be several years before we could afford a playground and get where we need to be. Uh, is there another slide on there, or is that the end of the deck? So if you'll go back to that phased, uh, slide that had the cost on there, it's probably two or three back. Uh, there you go. So, uh, you know, what we would target, how we're gonna approach this, so we can cut this into some smaller pieces, uh, the reason is so we can move sooner rather than later, so we're really trying to raise that 400K to actually kick off that first piece, and then we kinda just continue the fundraiser drive for the others. Um, I don't know what money might or might not be available from the city, where there's a, a chance that there's some contribution or funding from there, but certainly, anything we could get on that, against that 400 would boost that up. Um, and I, I heard numbers earlier in discussions, but I, but an example, if there was 275 out there, then that would leave us 125 to raise to hit the 400. If we have 20 now, then we'd have to raise 100 between now and when that, when that type of money might become available in March. I think we can do it. I think especially if the kinda message to the community is, "Hey, we've gotta match the city, we're gonna, you know, they've got this great fund, if we can just match this much, a, a smaller portion of that, we can start this right away." I think that actually what maybe generates some excitement as a challenge. But that's what I have, that's where we're at. And so I think the next steps are for you guys to consider it, think about it, see if there's questions after the fact, and then mull around, uh, if there's funding or not, what that might look like, and mull around whether you like it or not, whether you like the design or not. You know, because, you know, a few steps forward is, "We like the design, what can we do next? We're gonna fundraise." Okay, well, we can come up with some other funds, so here's what we'll do, and then we add that to the fundraising. But I think that's really the next step, is look at the design and say, "We like it, how do we fund it, where do we go next?" Or not. Any questions at this point? I know there's a lot of material there to...
Scott, so, so as we, as we look at this and kinda look over it, um, let's just say money's not the issue right now. Is there ways that, let's say we raise all the funding that we need to, to build this right here, and two years later, we wanna add something to this? We, this is designed in such a way that the vendor can come in and add a component, or things like that, I would imagine?
And I'll tell you, I'll share what I think, and I can be corrected if I'm wrong technically. Um, the playground is a pretty tight fit. In other words, with each piece of equipment, there's a safety parameter dependent on that type of design. And so in fact, the, um, zip lines, the reason we extended that out, that outpass there was to make room for the web climber. So there might be a small piece of thing that could fit in there, um, but what we, what we experienced so far was for the web, for the zip line, we had to expand out. So the answer is yes, it could be, but it would need to go outside that footprint, is my guess, and then whatever regulations and requirements need to be checked off for that to occur. Does that sound right?
I have a question.
Yes.
So is, is this phase one?
That is all phase one, yes. The two, it's the, the giant climbing structure, that's the, and then there's the smaller climbing structure, which is, and then this is the two swing sets, that's phase one. And the surfacing and the rubber.
Right. But, but this whole thing?
Yes.
This picture is phase one?
Well, that, that, that big piece of equipment, I don't have...
You don't borrow this one?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, yes.
I figured it was all phase.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
At the ri, at the risk of this sounding like a silly question, how do you, if you are in a wheelchair, how do you get from phase one to the zip line without going all the way around the park? Is there-
You would have to, with that design, you would, you would have to go around, I think there would be a discussion when we get to phase four about how to handle that fencing line. One thing we talked about, you could actually join those two fence lines, give you that edge to progress, you just have to reroute that walkway that's out there to go around that, and then you could extend that rubber pathway straight across. But that's a bigger design, and, and it changes some other parts of the park-
Oh, yeah.
-that somebody would have to kinda weigh in and agree on whether that would be appropriate. Because as it's designed now, it's, it's kinda two separate pieces that'll have their different fence lines, and it's only because of space. And rather than change what's there, we moved it around, but I would, I would think the perfect solution would be to combine that, add that fence line, and then you might even be able to add some extra space in there if you're gonna head that direction for expansion later.
If the land trust agrees with that.
Yes, that's right, if the land trust, all the parts and pieces.
Is all recreational flattery between sculptures and the old flattery?
No.
Yeah?
Right. This, this could be, uh-
What we need is rules to go outside of the footprint, but-
It needs to be approved, but they're right.
And it should be relatively easy to-
I can't with that anymore.
I, I would assume the land trust would allow us to move outside the footprint just a little bit, at like the zip line area. Surely, that would be doable. I like it.
I like it. As, as, I like it. I like the fact that it's accessible. I mean, that was my whole point from the beginning. So I like the fact that all children in this community can use the playground.
Any other questions for me at this point? Well, appreciate it. If you do have questions, email me or call me, um, and we will see where we head next. I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
Item 12, communication from mayor and commissioners. Commissioner Burks.
I really appreciate all the hard work the committee's put into this. I mean, that's amazing. I, I'm really excited. I, I really like the product that y'all have brought to us. I really like the fact that there was a lot of community involvement, there were surveys sent out, people coming in. That's really important to me. I wanna look at it a little bit more, but I really, really like what I'm seeing. What I would like to see from the city is us look at being able to fund 50, up to 50% as far as matching. Whatever the community can raise, I, I'd love to see the city match that up to 50% of it. I'm, I'm really hoping to see the fundraising, now that we have something that we can look at, get people excited about, hopefully the fundraising will jumpstart. I, I'm looking forward to getting in there and helping doing that myself. So, again, thank you very, very much. I know it's been a process, but I really, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
a kid in a candy store. I wanted to climb in this thing. I'm so excited, and I know my kids are going to be really excited about this when I bring this home. Just amazing. And when we start talking about fundraising, and where are we going to find the money, God, what a great opportunity for Fairview to come together, to have this vision, for all of us to come together and have a purpose. I think it's going to be just a really exciting time for Fairview, for us to do that. And I want it here tomorrow. I know the kids in Fairview want it here tomorrow, and we have to make this a priority. I know I would like to see it to become a priority for the city, for the community, and I think we certainly can do that. So, thank everybody that was on the committee getting this put together. This presentation was phenomenal. The design is phenomenal, and I'm just ready to get this going. Thank you.
Mr. Lucas.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, thank you to Scott McCoy and the entire committee for putting this together. I really feel like this is really what we all envisioned this new player area could be and will be. And so, like everyone else, I'm extremely excited about it and how we move forward. And I agree with Mr. McCoy, once you see the picture, it kind of re-excites you to do some things, some fundraising events, some reaching into your pockets, and finding loose change in your couch, or whatever you got to do to make this happen. It's going to be great. Also, today, I saw where, I didn't catch all of it, and I'll probably get in trouble for not naming everybody, but our Main Street newspaper did the best of Fairview, I guess you would say. And speaking of Billy, best city event went to Nature Fest. Chris Hughes over at the high school was favorite high school coach. Hometown hero for Fairview was Ms. Eileen. Of course, Fairview Donuts. And our very own mayor, John Blade, was voted best elected official here in Fairview. So, good day for Fairview, so some great things happening, and I'm excited about the future. So, thank you all for being here tonight for this presentation. I appreciate it.
Sir, Vice Mayor Rainey.
Oh, so, Scott, thank you. I do have one question. How many packets of chewing gum did you chew during this process?
A lot of chewing gum.
But thank you all. I know it was a lot of work, I know it was a lot of time. It's a great project, I mean, it's going to be wonderful. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. I too am excited about the project. I love the fact that it's inclusive for all children. That was very important to me, very important to people that reached out to me during the process, and kudos to you all for that. Scott, thank you so much, and thank your committee for the hard work that you've done. And Nathan, thank you for being here tonight and explaining things to us. At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Go move.